Do you have our?
I do.
Good evening, folks. My name is Seth Mandelbaum. I'm managing partner of law firm of McCullough Goldberg and Stout. Very pleased to be here on behalf of the Miriam Osborne Memorial Home Association, the Osborne regarding his property at 101 Theol Road. Steve Rabel is on vacation and trusted me to handle this matter instead, which I appreciate. With me this evening is Matt Anderson, the president and CEO of the Osborne, Andy Tong, principal with DTS Providence, Caroline Warlick-Levens from buyer Blinder Bell, project architects, and Bob Gold from Towers Goldie Landscape and Tree, expert on the project. Since our last meeting, we have, actually, there's our team. Since our last meeting on June 10th, we provided a significant amount of additional information in these general categories. So what we'd like to do, if it's okay with the commission, is have three of our experts take you through these various topics, of course, answer any questions, either while we're presenting or at the end, whatever the commission's preference. And then we'll be making another submission in advance of your August meeting to keep advancing the ball forward. We've been, of course, in constant communication with Christian, who's been guiding us as to what additional information we need to provide, including underseeker, to keep the environmental review process moving forward as well. And my understanding is the commission may consider the August meeting scheduling a public hearing for one of its September meetings when the world is back from the summer.
Right, we don't want this one to be
No, and we wouldn't.
During the during kind of heavy duty vacation time.
Right, we wouldn't expect you to do so, and we still do have some homework to do.
Yeah.
But we did submit a significant amount of additional information since last month. So with that, I'll ask Andy.
And just to be clear, the city is currently reviewing drainage plan, the traffic plan, and the construction and the septic plan, right?
Yeah, we sent that to, I gave them the August meeting date is the next date, so they'll
Okay.
So that was drainage, construction management.
And traffic.
And traffic, okay, being reviewed by, great.
Yeah.
Excellent.
So it's the public utilities, not just, not like surface water control.
No, no, surface water control. The sewage is gonna have to be reviewed by the city engineer, by Ryan.
The sewage will be reviewed by Ryan, and that's gonna
Uh, well, you need to get the other ones, because we, we, it was already big enough.
These ones are shit.
So, um, the thick calculations were not.
But Andy Tong is going to give real high-level reviews, you know, to wade through all those pages of calculations, and then we'll go from there. Thank you so much. Andy?
Thank you, Seth. So I'm gonna hit the first three bullets on this list. Two are pressure recollection, site plan. The Osborne site itself is fifty-five point eight acres. The area proposed, new buildings include to the north of the main entrance, within the area generally of the current's traffic circle, two independent living units, buildings, an assisted living unit building, and a new entry portico. The second area of new buildings is in the center of the site, at the south end of the lawn created by the original three buildings. There is a, an amenity building forming the fourth side of that quadrangle, a new independent living unit building also forming the fourth side of the quadrangle formed by the pathway two thousand independent living unit buildings, and then some new cottages and a hybrid independent living unit building also forming its own courtyard in that area and making a transition to the existing cottages at the south end of the site, which will remain in place. In terms of the campus, the three entries, the main entry here on Theol, a second Theol entry, and a third entry at Old Post and Boston Post will remain as they are today, as well, the site utility connections to the street will also remain as they are today. So all the proposed work will happen within the campus. In terms of impervious coverage, the zoning adopted by the city council a couple of years ago provided for a maximum impervious area of thirty-five percent. Currently, the impervious area on the site is twenty-six point one percent, and the new buildings and changes to the roadways and parking areas increases to thirty point five. So that's below below the thirty-five, thirty-three percent rather, maximum. Here, you can see the new buildings in brown, three buildings at the front, and the series of buildings forming the quadrangle in the center of the site. The changes in paving include, in blue, a rerouting of the roadways around and finding access to those buildings, some changes to the surface parking at the north end of the site, some slight changes here at the southeast corner of the site. As part of this, the proposed buildings, as Carolyn will describe in a moment, there are a significant number of spaces put underground below the building in a single level of below-grade parking, and that will result in the removal of sixty-eight surface spaces from the existing condition. So we are still providing for visitor parking around the perimeter, but all the new resident parking and some of the staff parking will be located below the buildings and below some of the plaza areas, as Carolyn will describe.
So just, I can't really see too well, but
Yes.
That's not representative of what is impervious, right? Because, for example, on the, on the north side, it's, that's all impervious because there's a parking garage underneath, right? So that's not, that's not the calculation.
Yes, yes, this is just new impervious.
But for example, that area, are you, is that like white area between the building and the driveway at the entrance? Is that, are you saying that's impervious?
No, that's green. That's green space. Anything white is, is
But there's parking underneath all of that, right?
There's parking underneath it, yes.
Right, so how is it impervious if there's parking underneath?
Well, there's a, there's a grass surface above the
So how does that work? If you put grass over a parking, is it impervious or is it impervious?
You see the parking garage at Yankee Stadium with the soccer field on top of it?
I'm just asking, I, I get it, I understand that you're putting grass, but what?
It, it, it's generally, it's considered impervious. In fact, the fact that parking is provided underground allows for more open space to be preserved.
I like the parking underground, I'm just trying to understand the math behind the calculation.
Yeah, and then, similar to point one, Old Post Road, how the drainage and so forth is calculated.
So like how much dirt do you have to have on the roof of the garage to be impervious versus pervious?
How did you calculate the?
Well, if it's planted area, it's, it's pervious.
Right.
So there's sufficient gra, there's at least quality to soil to support plants, make a little bit less to support grass, but there's sufficient soil so that it percolates down through the soil, doesn't act the same way that it impervious to surface. It's not running off.
I, I, I could take either side of this argument, I don't know what
Really interesting question, I mean, I could, I
Yeah, like how much soil is enough to absorb
Right, I mean, you could, you could in theory put an inch of dirt and say it's impervious, right, all of a sudden on top of it, right? I, I don't know.
Well, I don't know, what is a green roof qualify as, right?
I don't know.
It's a roof.
I'm just, I don't know.
With a roof.
With a rainstorm like yesterday. So most of these areas are popular with landscape park. Most of these areas will need upwards of two feet minimum of soil to grow the types of shrubs and ground cover we're trying to grow in these areas. One thing to note and
Let's just have, let's just put that aside as a question to answer, rather than getting
Yeah, yeah, I'm not, I don't have
I think it's a really good question to ask, so let's just, we're not gonna try and answer
I mean, we're gonna say, because I don't think I've ever done it before, right?
Yeah, we're not gonna, it's, it's, it's like, it's just, put that out there as something we're asking about, so.
Yeah, I'm not arguing, I just want to understand, and I'm just posing a question, so I have no argument, I'm just asking.
Okay, all right.
Oh, do you know what the impervious would be if you did just include what was like, you know, like dig down and dig round? Because if you're below the thirty-three, then it's kind of a non-issue.
Uh, I don't know, we could calculate that?
I mean, I, I, again, I don't, we have not, I don't think we've, I think by our reaction, I don't think we've really dealt with this, and so I, I guess at some point we take a position, and I'm not, and again, I'm not advocating for a position, I'm just asking a question. But certainly, one way to solve the problem would be if you comply with that, then it's not even an issue, but, and I'm not saying it's an issue, but we do need to think about it.
Yeah, we do comply with the thirty-three percent max, right?
If you're under it.
The post condition.
Yeah, yeah.
If, if you don't include, if you include
Right, so it might be
Grass above a garage is imp, is not, as, I can't even, it's too late, I can't have like, I can't
No, I know what you're, I know what you're saying.
So, so when I, when I, it would be easy for you to do the calculation to see if you do include the areas of grass that had garage underneath, are you still below the, the limit?
I, I don't know what the value of that is, but other than
I'm with you.
Let's go ahead and see what engineers say in terms of how you calculate
Term, that's right.
Which is a good measure.
Yeah.
Because obviously, you don't want to create conditions where you would treat a green roof the same way as you would as an asphalt parking lot. It disincentivizes doing any
Hundred percent, I agree.
And I know that's, but, so I think that's the measure we'll rely on.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we have some experience.
I, I've seen it in other communities where what's being described is pervious, is treated as pervious for the SWIP
Okay.
By the engineering review, but you have your own independent reviewer, and I will have to confirm that.
Take a look.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to put it on a rabbit.
But it's a fair question that we'll, we'll dig into a little bit.
Yeah.
So for the purposes of this discussion, this is about site utilities. We've combined the stormwater management, the water line, and sewer lines on the same diagram. The stormwater management is in blue. Currently, there are three ponds on the site. Pond one is at the southwest corner at Theol and Osborne, pond two and three are along Post Road. Pond two will remain as it is today. Ponds one and three will remain as they are today in terms of the upper rim. At the bottom, the base will be broadened. Last meeting, I said they would be deepened, that was incorrectly stated. They would be broadened to increase the volume, such that this pond will be twenty percent, have twenty percent greater volume than it does today, and this pond will have forty percent. So that will help to accommodate some of the runoff, the additional runoff from the proposed development. In addition, there were proposed two underground infiltration systems here on the west side and here in the north side. The north, both of those replace a previously proposed surface infiltration basin that unfortunately had to remove or proposed to remove an existing tree that was thought to be of some value. So we've taken that away, and instead, we'll have two underground infiltration bases with cultech structures, similar to two that are already in place in those areas.
Have you seen the county's comments? They just came in yesterday.
Yeah, we, we saw them today.
Okay.
Just got it.
Um, it's just, just a note that on stormwater management, they have some comments, so I think we just wanted to respond to that.
Okay, we'll respond in our next session.
The green lines indicate the sanitary sewer lines. As I mentioned, there are no changes to the connections in the streets. The Osborne is a high point of this area of Rye, and so in fact, it connects to three different sewer systems within the city of Rye. And based on the study undertaken by the city a few years ago, it was determined that the system to the east, that is going to the Blind Brook with Main and Son Drive that go to the Blind Brook system, are under the most stress of any of the city's systems due to high inflow and infiltration, and also capacity limitations. So we do have some existing cottages and some existing independent living unit buildings that are going to that today. What we are able to do, because we have connections also to the Mamaronek sewer treatment plant and a line in Osborne Road, which has greater capacity and lower capacity both in the line and the plant, we are able to reroute from existing flows forty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty gallons per day from the Osborne, so it will no longer connect to the Son Drive and the Blind Brook system, thereby taking some stress off that existing system. The additional twenty-two thousand gallons from the proposed buildings will connect as well to the Osborne Road section and the Mamaronek treatment.
County also has a comment on the increase in, the increased flow in their policy of requiring reductions in inflow infiltration ratio three to one.
Yes, it's not really a reduction so much as improvements in the system to address that increased flow at, at those ratios. And that's something that we would sit down with the city engineer to determine where best that could be applied in this area in general.
That's a policy of the Westchester Planning Board?
Yes.
Is that a requirement for any sewer connection approval that you would need for Department Health?
Uh, no. It's, it's more a planning board, strong recommendations, and there's policies we will generally have, can place it as a condition and their approvals.
Yeah, so they have an increase in flow, we would have to identify things to do in the downstream system to offset three to one ratio.
I mean, I'm wondering if the redirection of some of the sewage flows is, on some level, some sort of, right?
It, it could be, if, absolutely.
Right.
If there are capacity issues in one plant, plus more capacity in another, rare opportunity
Change, yeah.
Uh, we'll, we'll, we can talk about what approvals are required with County Health. Is there any district change necessary because you've been transferring from one district to another, but you're in the district?
Uh, no, because I think we're, we're in both of those districts, so there's nothing, no changes to that picture, which would be necessary. But we do need to get help department approval for both the new water and sewer connections, centers, sewer connections.
Okay. Well, Ryan is looking at it, so.
Okay, right, thank you.
The purple line connotes the water line in the site, two connections from the street currently, and those could be rerouted or extended within the site to serve the new buildings. In terms of traffic, our traffic engineer, Artist Ian Hanover, has completed a twenty-twenty-five traffic evaluation that builds on the work they did during twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two to support the zoning amendment proposal. In that work, they looked at both the turning movements and the volumes along primarily Theol Road with the entry to the Osborne being here, and also as designated by both or suggested by both the planning board and the council at that time, the Osborne School provides for most of the traffic issues, if you will, in this area of, of Rye, primarily at the drop-off in the morning and the pickup in the afternoon. Based on the number of units that are proposed and the retention of the three site axes as they remain, there will be a very limited effect on the Osborne School, in fact, on any of the roads in the area based on the volumes that are proposed with this development. Now, I will turn it over to Bob Gold.
Thanks. So in our last meeting, there were some questions asked about the trees existing on site and the replacements that were going to be proposed for them. We have subsequently written a memo in response to that, and we've actually revised our drawing, site plan drawings in relation to that. So I'm, I'm just gonna quickly go over the essence of that memo. And to remind, I have my little cheat sheet to make sure that I don't get anything else wrong. So, there was a question asked about when the last update was done on the tree inventory, and it was a tree inventory update done last fall. I was erroneous in that all of the trees were not reevaluated for the size. So we have had, since that meeting, we have had the arborist go out, and he has reevaluated and cataloged an updated size of all of the impacted trees, and that is on the drawings that were submitted. We have then taken those updated sizes and recalculated based on the remove, the need removals, the required replacement. So I'll go over some of those numbers here. There's a total, Christian, I think you asked, total number of regulated trees on site on the fifty, essentially fifty-six acres. There's six hundred and fifty-four regulated trees. Of those, there are ninety-four regulated trees that would be impacted by this project. In essence, that's gonna require a replacement of approximately a hundred and seven, not approximately, exactly a hundred and seven trees to meet your, your tree ordinance. We're actually proposing, in the, not planting plans that you've received, we're proposing to provide an additional two hundred and thirty trees, essentially twice, more than twice the required number. Not only are we doubling the number of that's required, the size of the tree, we're proposing to plant a minimum of three to three and a half inch caliper, as opposed to your minimum two inch caliper. So not only we're doubling the required number, we're providing larger trees. The vast majority of the impacted trees obviously are going to be where, where the buildings are built, in the center of the site. So in essence, they're far away from the edges of the site. Notwithstanding, the planting plans that we've submitted show increased buffers around the entire perimeter of the site, and Caroline will go over a little bit about illustrations about the type of screening that's gonna be provided by those trees. Approximately fifty of the trees, the total trees that need to be impacted are, have been noted in the tree inventory in fair, poor, or critical condition. In addition to that, we have, since we met, we have met with a tree mover to assess the viability of actually moving, relocating some of the existing trees that are on the site. Now, because these trees are smaller, most of these trees that are able to be moved are not subject to the tree ordinance. So this would be sort of an over and above measure to move those trees. We are just at the beginning stages, working with the tree mover. We met with him, and will report to you at the next meeting what his recommendations are. I mentioned that the proposed tree planting at two hundred and thirty trees is based on a plant list, and again, it's on the drawings that submitted, intentionally selected a diverse plant list of mostly indigenous plants. But as you know, the Osborne is an arboretum, and we want to maintain, we will maintain its arboretum status. So what we've done is, we've now started looking at individual tree species that are being removed to ensure that if that tree species doesn't already exist on the site, we will add it to the plant list as one of the tree replacements to ensure that none of the species that are existing on site will be removed from the site. And finally, when the planting is finished, the additional two hundred and thirty trees, we expect, we know, that there will be approximately fifty to fifty-four additional trees on site after construction than there are today. So there will be a net gain of over fifty trees on site.
So fifty-three is the number?
Yes, fifty-three is, is, is the number, if you do the math.
So the other thing is, the tree law allows you to get, call it credit, but
Right.
If you take down a dead tree, or something that's hazardous, or, or, whatever, no credit's being taken.
Correct.
It's just, it's, it's being removed, it's being removed. There's, we're not having to debate over caliper sizes and, you know, no, that's not really dead, or
Okay, all right.
So it's just being calculated.
Okay, thank you. All right.
And Caroline, we'll take you through our last two topics.
Hey, everyone. So I'm gonna start with construction sequencing. The Osborne is a gauge of pipe construction at a diesel level to start maybe about construction sequencing. There were various diagrams included in our submission. I'm gonna, at a very high level, summarize that, I approve. The first thing that I wanted to point out is that all construction vehicles will be rerouted directly to Theol Road, so they will not be allowed to utilize Osborne Road, Boston Post Road, or Old Post Road in terms of construction workers. They will be parking off-site and bust-in, so they will not be taking over any street parking. This diagram here is indicating first the enabling phase. This is also showing the rerouting of traffic in the site. So once construction begins, this main entrance will remain open for residents delivering emergency vehicles and construction vehicles. Residents will utilize this lane over here to the right, construction vehicles over to the left. For the enabling phase, the construction office, parking, staging will occur here on the northeast side of the site. So next, this is really what we're calling Phase One and Two, so this is a consolidated diagram. The green line is indicating the traffic of residents. The purple line is indicating the pathway of construction and emergency vehicles. We wanted to point out that even though this area will be for construction vehicles only, emergency vehicles can still utilize it to be able to access the skilled nursing facility. In this first phase of construction, Buildings Seven, Eight, Nine, and Ten will be constructed, the below-grade parking, the above-grade structures in their entirety. The entrance over here at Old Post and Boston Post will remain for resident exit only. This will be an alternative resident entrance over here off of Theol Road.
But currently, the Old Post exit is gated, right?
Correct.
Have we done any kind of traffic analysis on that looks like?
In terms of?
Like, have you during the construction phase, because this construction phase, how long do you?
We're estimating around four years to
So for, for these phases or for the whole?
For the whole.
So the Phase One and Two, and the use of this exit-only lane, is that for four years or a shorter length of time?
I'll go through them. It will be roughly halfway. You'll start to see as the project is finished, the whole of the roads will remain open. We can certainly follow up with a traffic analysis specifically to each one of the
That's gonna be a busier area.
Yes.
Absolutely a busier area than having people on the
So construction, traffic routes generally looks at nine to five, it's helpful. And in our experience, construction is, construction, parking, there are, there's just a lot of parking there.
And that's Just underused lots of them at those old facilities.
Right, and that is something that's
That you might be able to lease, right?
Well, yeah, but maybe not, so.
Yeah, no, they got, well, they said that they were gonna work out a plan for transportation workers.
Okay, that, that would be important, get some detail on that.
Yes.
Okay.
That's great.
I'll get this slide up, and I'm sure both of us are curious what the answer is. If your IL residents and perhaps a few AO residents actually have cars and garage, their trips, right, when they exit, they're going on Field Road, current state, right? They're exiting on Field Road, turn a left, turn a right, whatever they're doing. During this, right, during these phases, for some reason, we're making their exit now also available onto the Old Post Road. Wouldn't it necessitate that rather than building volume to, because the volume's not going to increase?
That's, that's not our intention. The intention is that the Boston Post Road will work as it is today. Parking cars go out that way. Occasionally, garden home residents will head out that way or come in. It will, the, the main residence and the traffic all come in right now at the, the main gate exit here, and the residents that actually are coming to this side of campus, the parking garage is actually in this lower part of this building or access to the garden homes. So they're coming to this gate, coming in and going straight into the garage here. So they wouldn't come and access here and drive all the way through to get to here, though they'll be coming up.
Just give us some clarity on that.
Yeah, it's, it's very rare.
No, it's either a change in condition or it's not, because the, the, the more, the commission's gonna ask us to be studied. It's not worth a study.
Right, if it's not, if you're not actually gonna use that, then you don't necessarily need to study it. But if you're, but if you are gonna use the residence exit only, then.
The intention is to separate construction traffic, so the residents aren't exiting as construction vehicles are entering. That's really the intention of that.
Let's just get some clarity between, between now and the next meeting.
Yeah, it's gonna be stress, um, it's gonna be stress on the post road from this position, but it's not.
Right, just let us know, yeah, okay.
Okay, so then, the next sequencing is what we're calling Phases Three to Five. One thing that we did wanna point out is as the project moves along, we will need a place for excavation stockpile. It will be located in this vicinity. It is gonna be coordinated with trees to remain, to be protected, so we will make sure to coordinate on that in that location. The road, the roads remain the same as we did previously for Phases One to Two. The main difference with this one is once the south side of the campus is completed, the new assisted living building will be built. Once that is completed, then the current assisted living residents from the Osborne will move into that building, allowing it to be then renovated for the final phase of construction to occur, which is this slide here. So what will happen there, the last piece of construction will be building the complete below-grade parking level, Buildings One and the new entry pavilion and the complete renovation of the Osborne building. The yellow dash line is indicating construction fencing, so at this last phase of construction, all of the roads will remain as they are used today. So that's at a high level, the pathway for construction. Okay. This next piece that we wanted to review has to do with Building Ten. Let me just show you on the map what that is. This building Ten here is what we're calling, it's a hybrid independent living unit building. It'll have roughly sixteen independent living units with below-grade parking at that first level. So we wanted to show some visuals, give a little bit of clarity on that building. One of the things I wanna start with is this enlarged plan that we have down there. Talk a little bit about how far away from Old Post Road it falls and how that relates to current buildings on site to give you a little bit of clarity on the setback. This blue line here is our zoning maximum for a building that is four stories and fifty-five feet. So as you can see, we are well within that setback. The building kind of splays away from the property line at the worst possible moment of where it's closest to the road. It's around a hundred and ninety-seven feet, goes all the way to two hundred and seventy-six feet away from the road. In relationship to the current skilled nursing pavilion building, that is a building that currently sits against Old Post Road. The edge of that building is around a hundred and seventy-seven feet. So we're gonna be placing this building Ten even farther away than where that existing building sits. In terms of its height and its relationship, this is a more detailed cross-section here. This is basically cutting where this red line falls here through Old Post Road and then turning to cut through that building. So you can see how far away it is falling from the property line, which falls here. The existing skilled nursing pavilion is roughly fifty-four feet in height from grade our building. From average grade will be roughly forty-two feet, so it will be lower than that existing building. Next, I wanted to touch a little bit on the design and how we're being very intentional with the facade design, but also the massing, thinking about its proximity to the road. There will be below-grade parking, as you can see, this red line is the existing grade. So the topography is moving down. So what we're doing is trying to bury that parking garage underneath the topography. And then above that, we have three levels of residential units above that. That top level, we are pulling away with terraces for those units to really make it feel like it's a three-story building. And the last move that we're making, this is actually a rendering of that proposed building. This is looking at it from Old Post Road. You can see this first level that will include the access point to the parking garage. We have a two-story reading of the facade above. And then that fourth level is a different materiality spilling down into the middle, really trying to break down the length of that building. One other move that we're making is thinking about thoughtful materiality for the parking entrance, knowing that it, that is gonna be facing Old Post Road.
So, uh, one question the chair had is, the fact that that loop road goes right behind this building does mean it's harder to screen, it's harder to break up that mass with vegetation. Have you considered whether or not the loop road can go on the other side or you can have park entrances on, on the short side of Building Ten? To give your, to, the, to give the, the plan a little more ability to screen that large, what is a large new building with a fairly large scale with more green?
I would actually argue that there's plenty of room to screen.
Well, you've got the pond there, you've got the pond there, right?
If you look this area here, which is on the post roadside of the pond, there's not a whole lot of vegetation there now. If you look at the planting plan that we proposed, that's where we're proposing to do a significant amount of screen.
And another consideration is that you're fighting grade if you can see it well here. This is, the grade is dropping away.
Right.
And that's why you're servicing.
No, I understand that, that's also why it has more of a, a larger scale.
You're gonna have to cut down.
Yeah.
And you still probably have this exposed facade. I mean, I suppose you could bury it, but.
Yeah. I mean, you know.
The, the top of the building won't change.
It's also the part of the, of the campus that's closest to those residential neighborhoods or across the Old Post Road. And it doesn't feel like a residential building. I mean, that's, that's part of the reason why that's, it's raising some red flags on the, on the size and scale of the building in that location.
Is that plan that you're showing, the Lenges Gate Plan?
That's the Lestrade, that's the Lestrade, yes, we should refer to the proper.
On the other hand, the illustrations that are following are, are exactly based on the plant.
But also, Laura, when Nick made those initial alterations, we had this information there about the height of the pavilion, because we do have, the pavilion reflects benchmark, right? So the height of, of, in fact, the pavilion is somewhat closer, well, somewhat closer to the Old Post Road, and I find it more comforting.
Yes, so, but its placement is closer to the, to the. It, it is on that side, section of the building that's, or the section of the campus is less, has less impact on all, on residents. I mean, let me draw by.
Sometimes our residents need to see stuff, right?
Yeah, but I'm just, I'm just saying, it's a change, and this, a, a, a concern about the size and scale of buildings that are going around town is something that we need to hear about in all your places in this planning position. So that's something I just want to make sure it's on your, yeah.
Noted. Either you from Old Post Road or.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna actually jump into some USHA studies that we've done that might also be helpful with this conversation. So what we've done is, these are photographs, we've done wintertime photos, trying to be very honest about what you will see in the wintertime. These were taken in January of this year. And what we've done is, we've taken these photographs and not only updated them to show Building Ten, we're showing the correct trees that will be removed, as well as superimposing the new trees that will be included. So these are those three views here. This is a heat plant down here. So this first image is taken right there at that current access point to the site. You can see that right here. This is view E, is as you go up Old Post Road right here. And then this you see is from where Packer's Court intersects Old Post Road.
This is current condition, right?
Yes, that's the current condition.
Magic.
Okay, so this is now superimposed again with those wintertime images. So what you can see in this top view here, this is showing the tree maturity roughly three to five years.
Three to five years.
Of these new trees that you're seeing superimposed. It is showing some of the trees that are being removed. You can see some of those cottages back here, and then Building Ten behind this tree coverage. View E, you can see Building Ten superimposed again, to Bob's point earlier. This is on the outside of that pond on the Old Post Road side where we are imploding some new tree plantings. And then this last view here, you can see the Osborne building and the skilled nursing pavilion, and then you can see that Building Ten down here in the distance. And then next, we took the same images in May of this year to give you an indication of how it's gonna feel with the tree coverage. Again, those three images, you're seeing a little bit of Building Ten here, a lot of coverage here, and a lot of coverage here with those new trees that are gonna be fronting that building.
Thank you.
That's what we wanted to cover tonight, but if you wanna circle back.
All right, thank you, yeah, no, appreciate that.
Are there any other questions or things you'd like us to address in our next submission? I know, Christian, you asked some secret documentation, so we'll work on that.
Yeah.
I wanna make sure we're giving commission everything that you need to feel comfortable hopefully setting.
Just have one question. Did you do any borings, 'cause there's quite a bit of underground parking?
Yes.
And, and, not in a shot?
No, we did a geotech analysis in our usability, and we felt very good about the locations. We are only proposing one level of below-grade parking, so it will be not allowable.
That's for, in front of the main building?
Yeah. We checked boring locations in this vicinity as well as Building Seven, because that will have a below-grade parking component as well as Building Ten. So we made sure to check all of that.
And likely no blasting?
Correct.
Um, on Building Ten, I mean, I think one of the reasons why it's gotten these focuses is that if, if there's a way to make it look more like a, since it's only sixteen, it's residents that are coming, is there a way to make it look more like a residential building? Or to blend better in with the campus rules and the other buildings? At the moment, it feels like one of the most industrial, you know, buildings on the campus, and it's gonna be one of the most busy, so just something to do some thought.
Okay, thank you.
On that Building Ten, the max height is forty-two feet, you said?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
Before, before you said the pavilion was in the fifties, you had ten in the forties.
Yeah, so.
Hold on, I'm not sure we're answering the right question. The max allowed or the max proposed?
Proposed, like, the Building Ten as proposed.
As proposed is forty-two feet from average grade. Okay, allowable is fifty-five.
Right.
So thirteen feet below the max.
Correct. Thank you.
Wanna make sure we're answering the right question?
Yeah, okay.
And now, to slay for those many, it's a long time before the city council on these very questions.
I know, I know, I know that Brian was running with that, I know, I know, I know.
It's a number of stories, the more you go, the higher you go, the more setback, the higher you settle.
No, we appreciate that there was a lot of that in the results, I'm sorry.
So we, you know, we're complying with what was put into that.
We, we understand, okay. All right, thank you all, we really appreciate it.
Maybe so much.
Yeah, thank you.
See you next month.
See you next semester.